I apologize, I'm mentally transitioning from working as a school board. So I'm trying to just get everything up. We've got, we'll do actually a quick round of introductions. But this is the Board Elections Task Force. And the official Board members on that task force are myself, Karenette, and Director Brad Edwards and Director Hollins.
Who's nine's way.
Who is virtually joining us and he's driving in as well. And then thank you Director Scott Ben for joining us as well. Why don't we just do a quick round of introductions again, Andrew Scott for Vice Chair and.
Director Constan, been interested in this issue for a long time, as Courtney knows. See if we can do more than we are just obligated to do.
Roseanne.
Oh, Roseanne Powell, for me.
Julia Brad Edwards, maybe task force member.
Zane Emerson, student representative for McDaniel High School.
Oscar Calvert, student rep for Penelope and a member of the council.
And I'm sorry, I missed your name, Van.
Zane Pope.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So sure.
Kate Wilkinson, the new general counsel at PDS and was large at general counsel.
Courtney Westling, Director of Government Relations, and I'll run the slides today.
Great. And Director Hollins on the phone?
Hi, Gary Hollins, Canadian member. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about the purpose of this task force. And I'm going to say that in terms of the way we've sort of envisioned it. But again, open to some conversation about that purpose as well. And then we are going to go into, staff are going to walk through the information we have from PSU in terms of the rezoning. And then talk a little bit about next steps after sort of getting some of that information on timeline. The real purpose of this task force and what I'm hoping, and I think a lot of you know this, but if not, we'll sort of talk generally about what we have to do. There are some mandatory things that we are obligated to do as part of coming out of the 2020 census. There are also some optional things that we have, by definition optional, that we have discretion in terms of whether to do those or not. Hey Gary.
Hello.
And so really what I'm hoping that we can get out of this task force is a little bit more clarity about what those options are. And again, you know, this is going to be a board decision ultimately in terms of both the redistricting and also what, you know, what we're at this point in time. But I'm hoping this task force can help sort of have that discussion and weigh through some of those options. To just sort of give a little bit more detail there, the, what we are required to do under law, and I'll let the lawyers correct me if I'm wrong, but our districts need to be a relatively similar size. And there's a little bit of discretion there, but you know, generally they need to be a relatively similar size. So we're required after the census to make adjustments if needed. And I think you'll hear from staff and PSU that those adjustments are needed, that we're more than 10%, you know, difference from the zones from one another. So at a very minimum, as a school district, we need to make adjustments to the zones to bring them back within that 10% number. How we do that, there are a couple of different ways. And again, staff are going to walk through PSU, put together two different options. I mean, there's probably an infinite number of options, but give some guidance that I'll let you all walk through in terms of just, you know, you know, starting points for options A and B and what those might be. In addition to that required redistricting, there's also some discretionary question, options that we have. And one of the things that we've been talking about, I actually don't know how long. I know since I got on the board, it's been something that we've talked about. I think those conversations probably predated that and probably go back a long ways. But the question of whether our at-large voting system is fair and equitable and continues to make sense. I will just tell you where I started from in that, you know, and I was, as part of City Club, when City Club issued their report on the city Portland's, you know, at-large election system a few years ago. And I helped participate in that and really came to understand that these types of at-large voting systems where you live in a particular zone and get elected at large have a very racist history. They were really started, you know, in the South and post-Civil War as, you know, really ways to dilute the power of minority voters, particularly black voters. I think the, and there's been generally a movement, you know, away from those over time. There is some more recent scholarship which sort of asked that question again, that if you look at those, do you really see, you know, dilution of black voting and black representation? And I think the evidence is a little bit mixed. But I think we can't ignore that history and ignore the fact that, you know, at least on its surface, it's just, it's a pretty odd system to sort of say you have to live here, but you have to get elected citywide. And particularly in a city like Portland, which already is a predominantly white city, it feels like a way that dilutes even further sort of the minority vote. And I think that's something we need to wrestle with. There's some legislation which I will again let our legal experts sort of walk through that recently passed and, you know, that gives us some passivity. And as a school district, we can make those changes. And there's some risk of not making that change because again, there's some, you know, we are a little bit vulnerable right now from an action that could be taken under that legislation as well. So that's a question we need to grapple with. It's not a required change, but it is a change that we may wish to make. And then I think, you know, at least, at least the prior board had expressed some interest in making that change. And, you know, we've held off a little bit given everything else going on this school year from having this conversation, but we really do need to have it now. And, you know, timelines are a little bit tight in terms of making changes given upcoming elections. So we want to have that conversation in more detail. And then beyond.
And Andrew.
Yes.
And we have the ability to make that change just by board resolution, right?
We do.
Yeah.
And for what it's worth, it actually applies to the, oh, not the next election, but the subsequent election.
So. Well, so I want to be clear.
You have to do it beforehand, but it is the.
If we elect.
So I wanted, so actually just staff are going to walk through that. There are two paths, one of which is to make the change now and it would not apply in 2023, but apply in 2025. There is a path that we can make the change and have it apply in 2023. And so I think that's also a question that we need to, you know, to grapple with, right? If we're going to go down that, do we, you know, do we wait or do we not? And then there are other things that I will, so the way I'm thinking about this, but again, open to everyone and hearing from everyone else. The mandatory stuff is the mandatory stuff we have to do. Then there's this sort of optional, but potentially doable and I think important. And then there's sort of what I'm considering a third bucket of potential work that I also think is interesting and important, but personally, I question whether we have the capacity to do it right now. So these are things like, do we want to do any sort of campaign finance reform, right? That is also something that as a district, we could probably impose some standards, although again, court issues have limited that a little bit. There's issues of 16-year-olds voting, or even younger for that matter. You know, that's something I'm very interested in. I see no reason why 16-year-olds shouldn't be able to vote in school board elections. That would require a state law change and obviously a lot of sort of engagement work. It'd be pretty, it'd be a pretty big change. I think it's happened and I can't remember what, did it happen somewhere? There's another question that's come up, you know, whether we want to allow, you know, undocumented residents to vote in school board elections. Again, and I think there was a district that did that.
New York City just did.
New York City's did, and I think there was another one as well. Did LA do it? I can't remember, LA Unified?
I don't know, New York just did, I think, the last month.
Again, I think a really interesting issue. I think there's some good questions there, something I'd be interested in looking at. I question a little bit in terms of our capacity to engage the community on a change that big. But again, I don't want to necessarily take things off the table. But I'm sort of in my mind thinking about these as three different buckets. The first one we have to do, the second one we may or may not, we want to talk about whether we can do that quickly or take up time, and the third one feels a little bit more out of reach, but I would, I would like to put that on the work plan, looking at it.
So my question would be, would it be possible for that third option to continue past this, you know, our current timeline to continue that work past that timeline?
Yeah, I hope so. I mean, so in my view, if there's, if there's board interest of moving forward or community interest for that matter, we would do what we have to do now and then set out a plan and a timeline for engaging on those larger questions. So yeah, how do we do the research behind it? How do we do community engagement around it? What's it going to take to get, and each one of those is a little bit different, what we have authority to do, what we need state authority to do, et cetera, so.
And the other point on that is that we wouldn't necessarily need to carry the water for that. You know, we could lean on some of our partners like OSBA and/or Oregon Student Voice to start to agitate on that as well and we can, we can jump in as needed. Because if we're changing state laws, it should be a statewide movement.
Questions before we sort of move into the substance of what we got from PSU? And then what I'm hoping is we have that conversation and then circle back to these other issues.
Just a question, do we have the timeline for the minimum of the redistricting, when that has to be done by?
So we're going to, yeah, hear that as part of the presentation, so.
The only thing I would add to your frame up of things as to why, you know, factors we think about with that second bucket is related to campaign finance, even without changing our own regulations, that that is an argument for why we should consider going to zone voting. Because we've seen, you know, huge disparities in candidates' ability to fundraise or to self-finance their campaigns. And that's a huge source of equity there, where you have to campaign citywide.
Which is the reality is like, it's a volunteer office and having to run citywide is, if you have a professional life, it's just there's some kinds of reasons to make it more manageable.
Yeah. Okay. I don't, Kate, I guess I'm turning it over to you, Courtney.
Sure.
Great.
So just, I think some of this has already been stated, Andrew, but for Director Scott. So generally after a census, a tenure census, we get new numbers and we rezone our district. And we look at them, we try to align them and read, I guess, there's reapportionment is one of the terms that is being tossed around. But we are, and I'm sorry, my, I'm just going to look it up there. Is this thing always, I was like, oh, I can move it, just kidding. Solve my own problem. So as you mentioned, the general rule is that our board zones need to be within 10% of the population size. And so we've grown as a city, we have to readjust our boundaries, our zones to reflect those numbers. So what we, what we did is we asked Portland State's Population Research Center to take a look and give us, and I'm going to get into this, but give us a couple of options on how we could get to those, to that about 74,255 target number. It's pretty specific, but that's the target. We, right now, the, some of our zones are 12% or more. So we want to make sure that we're getting closer to that 10% number. Yeah, so this is where, and you all have the map, the maps written in the materials, but each of the zones currently, and you'll see, I'm not going to walk through each of these, but you'll see that some are under and some are over target. So we need to come up with a way to make them a little more closely towards that 74,255 number. You'll see the top three, the zones one, two, and three. So let's see, that's Director Scott, Director Constan, Director DePass, are over target and then the rest are under, a little bit. And then one's really barely.
No, I'm six.
Anyway, so you'll see the numbers there, but. So in the, so in the materials that PSU provided, they gave us two scenarios. One scenario is very similar to what we do now. And so they, they're calling it, do you remember the name that they called it?
It's like something like retention.
Yeah, it real, I'll go back and look.
It's like small changes.
Very small, minimal changes to get us to those numbers without making big, you know, big changes that are going to affect the size of the zone. And then the other one is called, oh, minimally adjusted, that's what it's called, minimally adjusted.
Preservation.
So as you're, yeah, exactly. So as you're looking, the ones that say minimally adjusted are sort of option one, closest to what we have now. And then number two is a little different and it, I think, to Director Scott's point, I think that's the one that, you know, you no longer would have sell one because it would be on one side of the river. So there are a few larger changes and are a little closer to how we are catching areas for high schools. So that is not currently something that they look at for the minimally adjusted and for the current status or current, our current zones. But in option two, that would be something that they take under consideration. And so I guess to the point here, using high school catchment areas and rivers. So you won't cross rivers to have a zone on Zellwood, for example. And then, let's wait for this, yeah.
Can I ask a question? I'll read this later, and the preservation one is, does that mean attain all the highs, which is the minimally adjusted, does that mean all, keep all the high schools in the same zone they're currently in?
For the minimally adjusted, that's my understanding, just tweaking a few boundaries, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no high school, actual high school moving?
I did not see that.
Okay.
We can make sure, double check it.
And then do you have the roll data?
Yes. Other, and so I guess the main point here is we'd have to make a decision on one of the two options. Or if you don't like either of them, we want to go back to the drawing board and figure something else out. That's also, I guess, an option, but we would have to expand our contract with PSU and it would take a lot longer. And it's, you know, generally, I think, a couple of different options are what other entities look at. So this is the easy part of the discussion, I see. You know, not talking about changing how we elect board members, but just changing, deciding whether, which way we go in changing the zones.
I do think though, in my mind, they're inextricably linked. Because I think if we stay with our at-large voting, doesn't really make sense to change our boundaries to align with high school catchments. But if we make that switch, then it absolutely makes sense to align with high school catchments. Because that's how, that's how people think about our communities. You know, they think in terms of school communities.
Are there other questions about? And keep in mind, we're not the Population Research Center, so we don't have, you know, we can't get into these too much. But, but we, you know, anything that is on your mind or a question you have that we can take back to them, they're going to be available for the February 22nd board meeting to answer the questions of the full board when we have this discussion.
I think if we keep our voting system the same, this is an extremely simple proposition as they've shown. It's just a question of tweaking a few boundaries by a street, you know, and it, it doesn't really make an appreciable difference, it just brings us into compliance. So I think we could accomplish that, you know, very efficiently. If it's a little, it's more involved if we decide to change the way we elect. So that's, to me, that's a question.
No, I think that's a good way to think about it and I actually have quite a bit of that connection. One of the things I was a little surprised at was to find that 10 years ago, the district did very, very little, in fact, maybe no outreach at all to the community. They just got information from PSU and passed it. Feels a little odd to me.
I think there was no change in this. I think there didn't seem much difference. That's what, those explanations I was given.
Okay. I mean, probably, probably the same as like our option A, changes.
I think that's.
I think that's a question for us as a board, how much community engagement should we be doing around this process? And obviously that's going to depend a little bit on the big changes. I mean, if we're only going with minimal changes because we have to by law, you know, that feels like it's a pretty simple conversation. We publish the maps, we, you know, maybe have a hearing, see if anybody has any issues or comments and we can forward. Obviously, changing the way we vote feels like it requires a pretty significant public engagement, you know, and.
Well, the other thing is, I wonder if the upcoming change in the high school boundaries changes things. I mean, my, Zone Six is kind of a funky district, unlike some of the other, unlike some of the other ones, because like Alei Zona, which one it is, like kind of curls up and around. And then it has part of Madison, it's, I don't know, I think it's, in terms of school communities, I think it's much easier in some places like North Portland and the West Side, because it's like, there's a distinct school and the East Side is a little, I think there's more, I think, not as sharp, clear boundaries. Like I'm looking, just for example, like between the two and the A and the B, I'm trying to figure out like what, what sense this makes of who these people are altogether. You know, it's like part of Madison, it goes over here. I mean, I'm trying to think, what are, is it neighborhood organized or, or something else? Anyway, I.
Yeah.
It would be helpful to get, I say, it seems pretty clear on the West Side, what the.
So what, but the question is like how PSU drew the lines where they drew them?
Right, like what's the continuity? Because like right now, I look at the, between six and seven, there is like, I think it's a relic of Marshall being, used to be there. So there was a piece that came up there as part of Marshall, but Marshall doesn't have it, it doesn't sound very anymore.
Sorry, I'm just waiting, so like the question is.
So I'm just like, what's, what's the logic? That's what I'm saying, because it is, it doesn't appear to be logical as a Southeast port.
So can you talk a little bit about, Courtney or Kate, remind us again, what were the criteria we gave to PSU?
Well, for the set, for the minimally aligned was literally just shake out the numbers, right? Within what we currently have, whatever, if there are a couple of streets here and there that we need to shave off or add, then we can do that to make the numbers balance. For the realigned maps, that was more about, like I said, the high school catchment areas, rivers and other natural boundaries. I don't know, which, which map were you looking at?
Well, that's, that was going to be my next question, like which map should we be looking at?
So there's a couple of different ones, there's a couple that have overlays. So we had asked Ethan at the PRC to, and now I can't get into my notes because I'm, I'm sharing slides, but, so forgive me if I'm wrong here, but I think we'll get there. That we were going to have our realigned, so there's realigned, so there's baseline. And then there's minimally adjusted, and then there's realigned. Minimally adjusted is sort of, I'm calling option A, which is the streets, shaving off a street or two or, you know, a couple houses. And then realigned is the bigger changes based on high school catchment and rivers. So then there's, I believe, one map has baseline with realigned on top of it. And then there's a baseline with minimally adjusted on top of it. So you can see what we, from where we are now with what's been laid on top of it, with the two options laid on top of it. And then I believe there's one other one that has both, is there one that has both?
Yeah.
And we couldn't remember if we asked for that or not. So that might be a good one to look at, actually.
Would be helpful, I think, to compare layout A and B, is that what?
I think that's the third one.
I can.
Where it's the compare layout A and B, that one? Yeah, I think that's the first.
So where's the map that has the current ones?
It's under baseline, second to the bottom in our materials. Yeah, and I can also.
And I guess maybe, so, trying to remember my words, I mean, I think your question's a good one for PSU. You know, because again, they defined that option B using high school catchment and neighborhood boundaries. So I mean, I, again, I'm assuming I'm not a local reporter, but I'm assuming they, you know, they looked along sort of where those, the other natural, you know, barrier boundaries were or neighborhood boundaries were along catchment areas to draw them. I think that's a good question, Beth, in terms of, you know, why they figured it the way they did.
This is the comparison, can you see that okay? So if you look, so Plan A are the like outline lines. And then Plan B, which is the realigned, are the shaded areas. So if you see like, here we go, this.
People, if I may talk, can you hear people?
Well, I guess my question though is.
Like this area would be.
To what point?
Well, well, and I guess more for today's meeting. So again, we've, you know, we've got about another half hour here. You know, we have, we have PSU coming on the 22nd. So I think teeing up questions, right, either here or, you know, in advance of that in terms of what are we going to want to be asking the local reporters? What are the specific questions that we get there? You know, people in your, if your particular zone, you want to sort of ask, wait, why on this line? Because, you know, that's a, feels like an angle, like, those are great questions. I don't think we're going to, we're not going to have answers today, Courtney, though.
Yeah, to me, the, I think that's a great setup because to me, like the main one is like, at least the high school boundaries as they exist now, just to have a sense of spatiality there.
We can also get a map, I'm sure we can ask and get a map of the high schools. So that at least, and we, we'll try to get some major streets, I think Oscar, you'd ask about that. And we can be looking at this with like a symbol for the high school so that we can kind of see generally where they're, where they live within the.
Or even areas. An overlay of the high school boundary, not just.
I think that.
The location of the school.
Yeah, like a hatch, you know.
Because like it's hard to tell near like, yeah, which are the zones that have three high schools.
You kind of know if you know your zone, but like, normal general public probably doesn't.
Has it, like Gary, I don't know, like do you include, do you have Grant and Jefferson?
It has Grant and.
Or is Jefferson in too?
And Madison and.
Jefferson's in two.
Oh, you have Madison and then that six only has Crankford.
Yeah, well, you have Madison High School, but I have part of Madison.
Areas, yeah.
So I.
So option B, not changes.
Right, I seen that, I don't know if it'd be a changes.
I think we should gauge whether there's appetite to change the way that we elect. And if there is, then we've got a lot more questions in terms of what the map might look like.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's true. Courtney, was there more on your? Actually, actually, can you go ahead and walk through the timeline question? And then we had also the legislation.
Yeah, so for the census reapportionment, the balancing for just the, you know, the 2020 census, that process is different than if we chose to move in a different direction for elections. So for that, we just need to get that done in time to get ballots out. So early April is probably a good target for the 3310 conversation. And let me go back.
Sorry, early April.
Next year.
No, this year.
This year for this election? What is on the election?
Our Board of Design for 2022.
We wouldn't be sitting here.
Sorry, I'm sorry, yes, next.
Ah, don't worry, it's 2022.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, right, early April, right, 2022.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Although Loma County elections would, would prefer that as soon as.
Earlier.
Possible, that was the message they gave.
Yes, rezoning. I think maybe part, part of it is that we need to, can we just establish how we talk about each of these two things? Just for terms purposes. So for the census rezoning, does that sound like how we want to talk about it? Okay, so there's census rezoning and that's, let's get that figured out as soon as possible so that Loma County elections can adapt to that, those change zones. And then there's the conversation about how we do elections. And so we can call that, you know, we can call it just elections.
You would call it zone or.
But I think the issue.
Whatever you guys want to call it, but I think we just want to be on the same page on how we're talking about. So we don't need to, but this is easy to get.
The question is, and I think the concern is, we can't do rezoning until we have a clear understanding of how we want our election system.
So since we have to do the rezoning, it does seem to be worth doing this quickly if we can. So that could give us that application. And then I'll, I'll re-show my slides here.
So I guess the question there though, Loma County doesn't want to do this twice, right?
Right.
So, so I think that's, that, that's where, that's where it gets a little tricky for us, right? In the sense of if we are going to be doing some more substantive change, I'm going to call it the second election reform, so the first one is census rezoning, second is election reform. If we're going to be doing that, I mean, we're going to want to work through that whole process before bringing new maps to Loma County. So again, because they, you know, they'll have to, they have to redo a lot more. And so I think, I think in answer to the timeline question, I mean, we've been in contact with Loma County, Courtney has. I mean, it's, they, they have been reluctant to give us a drop dead date of like, this is the latest. Basically, their answer has been, please get us that information as soon as you possibly can, particularly if we're going to make big changes, because that requires like changing like where ballots go, who's on each ballot, I mean, it's, it's a big system change for them. So I mean, we've sort of been thinking about it, if, if we are going to go down that road, we would want to be doing all of that work from now through summer and be done with it by like September.
So and that would be election reform and.
Yes.
Right, and so essentially we would, yeah. So assuming, and I'm just going to throw this out there, if we went. Right, and so essentially we would, yeah, so, so assuming, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, if we went, wanted to do election reform and went with option B, um, you know, we would wanna be done with that work. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make up, you know, a date, but September 1st, right? And, and that's both so that Loma County can make the changes, but also from, this is gonna get back to the question, whether it's 2023 or 2025, but, but also giving people a chance then to adjust and think about what that means if we're gonna change. The other thing that gets complicated, I heard you mention, you know, is it zones or is it hybrid? Just switch, you know, that, that, that also, there's a policy conversation to have there. If we, if we move away from at large, do we just say seven zones, seven members? Or do we say five zones, two at-large members, or some other breakdown, right? And, um, again, this is where the iterations can get pretty complicated pretty quickly, uh, that could require really, really large changes.
Is it possible to see, Amy, I don't know if the Council of Great City Schools knows anything about, like what the benefit of say hybrid versus elect from, uh, elect from zones?
Yeah, I can ask a question at my, uh, weekly meeting. They don't have anything written about it, although there is some, I, there are some things you can find. I can send around some things talking about it, because, um, there was a big class action suit in Ferguson, Missouri about three years ago. Did you see that, Kate?
Yeah.
Which is kind of the bellwether case on this where, uh, and they were successful. They, um, the basis of the suit was saying that it was, it was inequitable and illegal actually to do this at-large voting, because it basically, you know, squeezed out black, uh, candidates. Um, and then, and that, that prevailed. So I don't know how much of a, how much of a tail that's had in other districts after that, but that was pending, that was a big deal.
So can we go ahead and talk about the legislation?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, so the House Bill 3310 was an effort to, um, it's kind of confusing because it, this is, it's not telling anyone that we have to do anything. It's saying you have this opportunity to do this so that you don't then have anything, any claims against you. And so, um, a number of stakeholders weighed in on this, um, you know, I'm trying to, now I can't even go back to the whole list, but, um, Picoult, the farm workers union, uh, the ACLU, um.
Stan.
Stanford Children, there, there was a long list of, of, of community groups that were advocating for this, um, for lots of, lots of reasons. But primarily what it left, um, districts to do is decide whether proactively you wanted to make that change, to not have to, um, I guess, have any, uh, any filings or claims against you for, um, to violate the Voting Rights Act. And then the other, so there's two pieces to it. You can proactively change it. Unilaterally, no community involvement, that takes less time. Or you do the, and maybe you can speak to that a little bit, but there's also, you couldn't go through the longer process, which I think we would wanna do most likely, but that would be up to you, um, to engage the community in that decision. There's sort of two ways to do it. Uh, and I think the, the funny thing sometimes in this area is that nobody's necessarily enforcing, like looking at our, our zones and saying, there's a problem here. You, it's in response to a lawsuit, but that's how the Voting Rights Act, they get enforced. So again, House Bill 3310 Oregon Voting Rights Act lays out a system with some required public process that either a, a school board could do in response to somebody saying, I think the way you elect is unconstitutional and it's violating my rights. So we would be doing it in response. We could do it proactively. And if we go down that route, and, um, I, I can lay this out in more detail, there's, I think, like two public meetings that are required. There's kind of a whole timeline. There's also a way the board can do it by resolution. Um, that one doesn't get you the protections necessarily of the act. Like if you go through this whole public process piece, you're more immune to any sort of eventual lawsuit that you might through that.
I'm, I'm sorry, what is the public process? You said two meetings and is there, I mean, is it an onerous process? Like why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you?
Well, so.
You wanted to do it fast or you didn't want any public process?
It's two meetings plus waiting an election sign.
Oh, right.
I think one of the policy questions that frankly I've struggled with, as I've thought about this is, if we agree this is an inequitable way to elect school board members, um, would we want to make that change sooner to just be done with it? Which we have the ability to do by resolution, we could, we could, you know, do that.
We can still have two meetings.
We could have any meetings as we want, right? And we could go ahead and, and do it by resolution and make that change right away, so it goes into place for the next election. Or we can follow this, this legislative process and, and it would go into effect for the 2025 election. Um, honestly, I can make an argument on both sides. If it's an inequitable system, we should make the change sooner rather than later and move forward with it. On the other hand, you know, the legislation is there for a reason and allows us, gives us a safe harbor in the meantime of like sort of following this along. If someone brought an action, you know, going through this process, but you have to wait. Um, and, and, and you know, the other question is, you know, waiting would give us more time to do engagement. But, um, you know, and so, so moving quickly might get rid of an inequitable voting system, but also would shorten our engagement, community engagement timeline. I think there's also a real question of whether the community has the capacity, I mean, one, does the school district have the capacity to do engagement? That's a big question, but even if this, the district does, or even if we were to bring in an outside group to help with this process, does the community have the ability right now coming out of COVID to engage in, in what I hope would be a very serious conversation about how we like school board members? Cause I think it matters. Um, you know, I, I tend to come down on the side of moving more quickly, but, um, there's some downsides to that.
Why is that a question? If we go through the faster process to get to the first election cycle, what protections or what things are we losing by doing that?
That's a good question.
Well, I think what you're potentially, you're losing the chance to basically have public engagement and sort of tacit approval that this is what you're doing. I mean, if the board just says, we're doing it, it's a resolution. You know, somebody may come out of the woodwork and say, I don't like it. Now you're interfering my rights and sue under that way. You could also get a lot of community outcry if this was done, you know, but that's not a legal, you know, argument. So that would be less wrong.
But if we waited, then the, this Voting Rights Act would protect what we had done front, I've got, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting though, if we're making a change, it seems less likely that someone would bring a challenge. I think if we don't make a change at all, I mean, if we just do the minimal change and sort of go forward, you know, some, someone at some point is, is, is going to, I'm, I'm a little surprised they haven't.
It is the biggest single, single reason why people don't run for the school board. It's like, oh, I'd like to serve, but oh my God, really? I have to like run citywide?
Yeah, I, I think the politics are interesting. I mean, and as board members, we can talk about this a little bit. I mean, yes, generally speaking, I think going to zones will make it easy, will, will lower the bar for entry. You know, someone, I mean, I think the reality is, is that current board members are gonna be, um, criticized either way. If we don't make a change, it's gonna be because it protects incumbents. If we do make a change, it's gonna be because it protects incumbents. So in some ways, right, I mean, you know, if you make a change and all of a sudden as an incumbent, if you decide to run again, you're running in a smaller district, you're already, you know, your name's already out there, it's, you know, it's potentially easier, right?
Potentially.
Yeah, but not necessarily any easier for an incumbent than a challenger. I mean, it's easier, period, but, yeah.
But I, I'm not, I'm not saying either one of those have merit. I'm saying that, I mean, I think the politics of it are gonna be that anyone who wants to look cynically is going to just, to, to figure out a reason why the board acted no matter how we act.
Well, that's called politics. People will look, people will disagree with whatever people do. We could pass the most, you know, I, but yeah, I.
You're never gonna avoid it.
Exactly, and I think that, actually, I don't know if I wanna say my.
I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll use myself as an example. If we don't make a change and I decide to run again, someone could say, well, you're just doing that because you know you're gonna be better off running at large. On the other hand, if we do make a change, my district, even, even though this becomes a little bit more diverse, it is still not a particularly diverse district. And they could say, oh, you're making the change to zones so that you don't have to run, you know, in a more diverse at-large, you know, so again.
I don't wanna live in your cynical world, Andrew.
So which always leads me back to, we should do what's best and, you know, the politics will play out as soon.
Um, I did wanna just reiterate what Andrew said. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not an elections law expert. I did do a couple hours of research before this, for this memo. And I mean, there's no doubt that these come out of the time south when we're trying to suppress minority voting. Again, more recent scholarship, the picture is a little mixed. In fact, in some cities that use at-large voting, there tends to be more minority representation on various boards and commissions and stuff. So it's somewhat of a mixed bag. I mean, we can certainly dig in and do a little bit more, but it does come out of that tradition. Um, Salem Kaiser also just went through this process. They did, they also vote the same way Portland votes now at-large, and they did not make a change to the voting. They did go through a public process with, you know, proposed maps.
And the redistricting.
Yes, um, basically the first stuff we were talking about, um, and, and adopted maps through that process that were up for public comment. They distributed them around the community, but again, no change to voting. I believe most school districts in Oregon vote the same way Portland does. Whether some of them are gonna get a challenge, I mean, who knows?
I mean, it's interesting, cause you look at the city, I don't know if the city hub piece was, but it used to be, there was a point in time when all five, um, city commissioners lived on the west side. I mean, when Nick Fish moved from, um, over by, in, in northeast to the, the west side.
Yeah, it's over to the west.
Stayed all five, but then now you have a much, the same, same system of voting, but you have a much more diverse, um, council. And is it, is that because of, um, the voter pay, the, the fishing thing? Is that a lot, the campaign financing that made a difference? The more people have access to, to run? But they did have this whole thing where it's like, oh, so you, you know, very, um, geographically wiggly system. Um, so they didn't even have, that you had to run in one zone.
Yeah, um, Kate.
And that's the second.
Kate, I think it'll be really useful in advance of the 22nd, maybe as part of our board materials to have some of that, um, research in there, just so folks can, can look through it.
Okay.
And I have a question around what, um, would it look like if we, or maybe even a suggestion of, we, uh, do this through and begin the changes, uh, where the changes come in fact in 2023, whether the board decides to go, um, continue citywide or go to a zone election, which I would prefer, but, um, uh, and, but we still continue that with community engagement. So we kind of protect ourselves from that criticism and get the community's input, uh, without having to wait out so long.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I'll speak for the board and y'all correctly, I don't think, I don't think this board's gonna wanna make a change without some community engagement. Even if we're not following the legislation, we're gonna wanna do something on this. Let me ask another question, because for me, in that sort of second bucket of, of election reform, it depend, the timeline may also depend on how big an election reform I wanna do. It's pretty easy for us to switch to zone elections. And, you know, particularly if we've got option B and that turns out to be an okay option, or maybe there's some tweaks to it, we just sort of are taking the at-large membership, we're going to seven zones, seven people elected by zones. I think we can do that with some pretty limited public, and not limited, but public engagement and move forward. Changing to, for instance, five, um, zones and two at-large members, which, you know, you can certainly make an argument that having some at-large members on your board makes sense, is a much bigger change that it feels to me would be harder to do for a 2023 election.
For sure. I'll, I'll say personally too, that I, uh, that seems untenable to me. Because if we change to being elected by zone, then those, uh, elected representatives represent that zone, which also has some unintended consequences that aren't great. Has a lot of benefits, but also some unintended consequences, since now we all represent all our children and all our schools. Um, and so that being the case, then you would, everyone would be at large. You would, you would be elected by your zone, you would only run in your zone. But when elected, you would represent the whole district as would two people represented at large. I mean, it would be the same as it is now in that respect. Yes.
Well, I'm not sure I'm probably gonna be there.
So, so, um, you know, right now we're all at-large representatives. We represent all zones, even though the vast majority of the community thinks we represent the zone in which we were elected. Um, so I'm assuming that if we go to being elected only by zone, that then once people serve, they represent their zone. Or?
I mean, I would, I get, I would argue it's like any other, I mean, I would, I would hope that our state representatives are representing their zone and also voting based on what's best for the state.
Right, right.
You're getting at a political issue, which my ideal is that happens and in reality, it's not. So I, then if you wanna.
No, I'm just cynical about it.
No, no, if you wanna, if you wanna criticize the zone election, it's that now you're gonna have seven board members each fighting for resources for their zone,
Yeah, for sure.
rather than the district as a whole. So for instance, if we're, if we're doing a major, um, you know, what we are, in the middle of like a major, you know, sort of, sort of resource reallocation to schools that are most in need. Um, i- if you are representing a zone that does not have very many of those schools, are you as likely to support that? I would hope the answer's yes. The political answer may be no.
Well, I think that it's an interesting consideration, because I think that the benefits of equity outweigh this. Cause I actually, I actually wrote articles for the school paper about why school members aren't paid, which is a whole nother issue. But it got into the issue of the fact that it's really, really expensive to run a campaign in a city. It's like 500 plus thousand people you have to reach in the whole city to be elect, just to be elected, and then you're not even paid for at all. So I think that the, for me personally, I think the, the equity benefits of doing the zone system would outweigh potential minor political problems of representation. I also think that, like, y'all come from your own zone, so you're all sort of, even though you were elected by the whole city, you're still tied to your neighborhood in a way, so you're still maybe considering some issues. So I don't believe that we would get these like hyper neighborhood specific board members who are like, oh, you know, like, out of me until I die. Like it's just like, I don't think it would change the politics too much, but it would have a massive benefit in terms of, you know, equity and who can run.
I also think it would be interesting, and I, I don't know, um, you know, in theory, it would be interesting, but I don't know in practice how it would work. But thinking about who would be interested in running for reelection, how would that affect, uh, kind of our decision-making around zone processes? Or rezoning in the process and, and what positions people are interested in.
So Andrew, how are we gonna make this, uh, offer direction from this, your committee or?
Yeah, well, so I think, I think next, so yeah, we started talking about timeline and next steps. I mean, what I'm, what I'm hearing is there's definitely interest in, in, in potential larger change. I think we need to put together a little bit more of a detailed timeline about what, what would that look like? So if we were gonna make this change, you know, what, what would that timeline look like? Um, we are scheduled on the 22nd as an agenda item. So I think, I think, and, and, and again, this is, you know, the, 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 the task force is intended to discuss these issues and help get some direction and, and bring the benefit of Director Hollins and Brim Edwards, you know, to the table. The board obviously has to make this decision. It has to be pretty heavily involved along the way. So I just wanna figure out a way that, you know, I, I, I view this as a little bit as a, we're trying to help synthesize the information, but not, this committee won't be making decisions, right? Or it's not, so I think that 22nd will be mostly, um, setting the table, right? Sort of making sure all board members are aware of, of what we have from PSU timelines, options. Um, and then I think the question, one of the agenda items is, is, is how, how often we want this task force to meet, um, moving forward. I, I think we probably need to meet relatively frequently as we set, you know, because again, we need to be making some progress. I still wanna be sensitive to the fact that district doesn't have a lot of capacity. Um, one of the ideas I've had is do we wanna bring in, um, both for the community engagement, well, really just for the community engagement side of this, do we wanna bring in someone who essentially could help run that? So there'd be a cost there, but finding a contractor who, you know, could, you know, could essentially help us.
Yeah, I would like to hear from Shanice and see how, um, the capacity of engagement performance.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. What, what can the district do and what do we need to look outside?
I'll have to talk about that as well.
Um, if the task force meeting every two weeks and my two fellow task force members, is that, is that enough?
Also maybe if it's every two, two weeks, maybe we could also have some, like occasionally a virtual option, just so we're.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to do virtual, yeah. All my meetings outside of PPS are still virtual. You're the only ones middle person.
This is very convenient today, because there was a couple of mass meetings, but yeah, no, I think that.
Is this Sam fine?
Like a Monday, four kind of thing?
I can make it work.
Yeah, Gary wants to move to five, which is probably works better for me as well.
Five, uh, yes, that works, yes.
Uh, I'm assuming we had no public comment today?
No, it's out?
No.
Thanks.
Um. Okay, sort of going back through that. Amy, did you have something?
So we'll get the, um, just in terms of requests from PSU, maps that have major streets and high schools, um, and overlay of that with option, well, we'll try to do it in a less confusing way. Maybe we'll have over option A and over option B and ask them to do over both, but that might get.
Maybe we'll have over option A and over option B, and ask them to do over both, but that might get confusing, so we'll see what we-
And we need to get an overlay of the whole enrollment, high school enrollment areas presently, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And I hate to add this, but like, just like major streets?
Yes.
Yeah.
We got that, yeah.
For the 22nd, how much time do we want, or do we think the board needs? And I guess the question comes back to, is it just setting the table and providing information? Are we going to be getting into detail then? And, and I, I guess maybe that's a good question to ask, I mean, uh, obviously each individual board member can do what they want. I mean, how, how much as a board are we gonna get into sort of street-by-street analysis of what PSU's done? Versus how much are we gonna trust that if they can explain their methodology, you know, we, they are the, they are the something better experts, but draw these guys?
Yeah, because otherwise, where's Jeremandry, just like anybody else?
And, and-
Yeah, well, actually, I think we should be careful about that, cause like, you know, to be able to explain to people what these are, it's just, it's, um, like over here, I don't have any idea, if I was telling somebody, like, yeah, it goes out to, I don't know, I think 72nd or maybe 92nd, it's just, it's hard to be able to explain what the differences are, and-
And there are dramatic differences in, uh, the, uh, second proposal.
Yeah, but not so much in north or west Portland, but there, there's a lot happening here, it's kinda like-
And I guess the, the question though is, I mean, how do we, I mean, I think you're right, we need to be able to explain it. At, at what point do we sort of put limits though on like, because there's gonna have to be a line drawn somewhere, so there's always gonna be an issue of like, why did you draw the line there and not two streets over? But then that also begins, like you said, getting to Jeremandry, you know, if you happen to know that some of your big supporters and donors are right there, and I'm not, I'm not saying any of us would necessarily do that, but it begins to feel a little, if, even if board members are like, beginning to redraw lines-
Yeah, I totally agree.
Versus, versus, versus resetting, um, um, criteria, right?
I'm guessing my question would be, Andy, if we were gonna be meeting again, if we wanna meet again before we get, till we get more information, before we have the board meeting, and then maybe do it after the next board meeting? So that way-
It's like the March 1st, is the following board meeting?
Alright, so we're gonna have another-
It's just a week later, we have to back to that, 22nd, first?
Yeah, that's what's on my calendar.
Just, so you go, I'll just go back to the conversation, cause I think, um, understanding and be able to explain, so for example, I can't explain why Ava's district goes, curls all the way out around there. And I think we should be careful in saying, like, just looking to what, like, actually what it is, that that somehow, like, people are trying to, uh, it's, change things for political reasons, it's just, a lot of the stuff on the east side doesn't make sense, or it's just like block to block, like neighborhoods are split up, and the high school boundaries are way less clear. So just so we have a, like, okay, is this the Franklin boundary, or is it the Cleveland boundary? Or what was the, like, the rationale for, cause I, I can't tell, look at the current boundaries and see any rationale at all. Other than they were just trying to get some extra people.
Okay, so what you're sort of questioning though is whether PSU followed the criteria. So that's a good conversation we should have with them, is we gave them some criteria. Given that criteria, why did they draw lines where they, and assuming they have a good answer, then we'll be able to explain it to the public in terms of what they did. If they sort of say, that maybe there, there might have been areas where they said, you know what? That there was, we had to draw a line somewhere, so we did.
Which would be good to know.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of times, okay, you know, we talked about, to people who are like interested in running, they're like, well, where is the zone? And, oh, you know-
I think it's also one thing I've heard from some mommas up there, very, very, make sure when we talk, when they talked about this to their community, um, and she talked about the rezoning, that people knew it wasn't a boundary change for their schools, their schools.
So they can get easily confused.
Cause you can get a lot of interest for a different part.
Don't step in that hole, it's quick sand.
No way.
So it's gonna be right upfront in our communication, but-
And then, um, Andrew, I have to ask, cause you just raised it, you said, like, where people's donors lives, like, they're, your donors could live anywhere, right? I mean, it's where you live. It's where the-
Like, can Hannah lives.
Right.
Doesn't matter to you.
Yeah, your donors will live anywhere, I mean, again, if we go to zones, that might start looking a little different. If you got a lot of donations from your, inside your, your zone, might look better than a lot of donations from outside your zone.
Yeah, but, but that isn't really, you probably wouldn't have it that much.
I am not accusing any of our board members of bad behavior, but the community, but, and that's what I think, if, to, to the extent we start really mucking line by line, I, I, I'm much more comfortable with, can PSU explain what they did? And if not, do we, you know, ask them, declare my question? And then if we as a board, do we wanna change the criteria? Maybe we wanna go back and say, okay, we first told you neighborhoods and catchment areas, but actually we wanna add two more criteria, and then, and then again, have them redo it. I just, I, I, I get real nervous if we start saying, oh, we're gonna move this line.
Yeah, I mean, I just, it, but it, it calls into question a little bit, like, for example, Madison, it's like, how is it that they come all the way over here versus going in? If they're short on, um, you know, there, a lot of these people are closer to Franklin than- be- because the high school boundaries aren't necessarily in some places logical, it creates some illogical. So, I, I think I'm in agreement with what you're saying, Andrew, about how we approach it. It's just-
So, um, the, the two weeks from now is the 21st, which is President's Day, so that's day off for staff, right? So I'd prefer not to make y'all work on a holiday.
You're so fine.
I guess the question is, we normally keep the Mondays at five, is there another day that week? We've got the board, cause I'm, I'm fine, I mean, I think we can push this off till March 1st for the board, if we wanted to have another committee meeting that week.
So that week though, we have to give materials already out, the 24th, Board's Board Meeting?
Hmm, good, good question, good, good point. Well, let me, I guess getting back to your question, what, right now, what we can bring to the board is, is the maps that we have and PSU to ask questions. Maybe we go ahead with that conversation on the 22nd, which will then give some more additional questions for us as a committee.
It, it might be worthwhile for the task force to have a point of view, which seems like maybe there is a consensus on point of view versus, like, here are the two options, or three options, and, you know, our initial discussions, here's where we're heading, and just, you know, is that, like, how do people feel about that? What questions do we, do you have? Cause then you're not just having a whole repeat of the same discussion. Although, you know, the other board members come up, have, have a very different point of view, then I, it comes back, but it may be more efficient to-
So does that speak to delaying the conversation with the board? I don't disagree with you, we should have a point of view, what does that lead you to?
Well, can I, I don't know, I seem like there was a lot of consensus, it seemed like emerging consensus.
Out of today's discussion.
That's what I heard.
No, I, I, I heard that too. So I just wanna be clear, are you suggesting that we, when we talk about on the 22nd, say the task force is recommending-
Yeah, if it, if it comes, if it-
That we go on this question? Yeah, Gary, how do you, how do you feel about that? I mean, I think where, where I'm hearing consensus is, we're very interested in looking at making election reform changes on a faster timeline. This is what that would look like in terms of timeline, engagement, et cetera.
Yes, like, say, Gary? I also think it's like, the difference is, a big difference is, this isn't just in redistricting. Like recommending doing the election reform at the same time.
Okay.
So, stay on the 22nd, and then come back after that with the-
Yeah, so maybe we push the next meeting then to the, um, 28th? And then we could do two weeks from that point, so that's three weeks from today, right? The next task force meeting, so, come to the board, I, I, I'm totally comfortable with us saying, you know, this, and, and, and having, again, I think the only additional materials we'll need is a more detailed timeline on what that looks like. We get feedback at the 22nd from the board about whether there's general interest in continuing down that road.
And, and for the timeline, you want a timeline for realignment? And do you want a timeline for both, assuming that you decided to do, to move forward with both?
So, I think what we, I think the timeline for realignment's really straightforward.
Yeah.
Right?
I agree.
So I'm not even sure we need to do anything more on that. I think what we need is a timeline maybe for two different, what I would say is, election reform, I'm gonna call it simple election reform of moving to zones, what would that timeline look like? More complex election reform of zones and at-large, some hybrid system, what would that look like? And, and maybe those timelines are the same?
Which I think it would be hard to say, let's move to five and two at-large in the same timeline.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, it, it, that's a, that's a bigger change. Well, let me, I mean, let's go around and talk to, I mean, I'm, I'm interested to hear from the students and board members. I mean, how, how do you feel about that issue? Amy, I heard what you said, but honestly, I didn't know where you came down on it, about, you said something was untenable, which, which was what?
Well, the five-two thing, I mean, uh, because, I, I mean, one of the things we didn't talk about explicitly is that we could change to running by zone and only people in the zone vote in that race, but then people still are at-large representatives once elected.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, because once you're elected by your zone, I mean, again, I would love to think that everyone thinks of themselves, looking at the whole district, but there's no, there's no official difference there.
Well, because a lot of districts say, you know, you're elected from this zone, you represent zone three. So, which I think is, you know, generally not good for districts.
But I think what-
What's, I guess, what's the difference between what we do now? We do, we're, we're representing the zone, and even though we get, like-
Well, right now, we're all at-large representatives, so we all represent all students in all zones.
And I think that would be less of a-
We just have to live in our constituency or something.
But what makes you an at-large versus a zone representative is who, who are your voters?
Who your constituency is, probably.
Yeah, who your constituency is.
And I think if we wanted to change to a system like that, that'd be less of the work of the task force and more of a, a culture, how the culture of the board works.
Yeah.
Well, cause that's also one of my worries with the, the hybrids, like, for example, five and two, is that now you have to decide which of the two board members now has to run at-large, and which of the five get to run in zone? Right? Cause you'd have, cause right now, if we, if we just do the seven are zones, um, then you can just like, then it's easy to, you know, stay the same now as the voter districts, but if we do a hybrid system, some people are going to have to be sort of booted off the district system and turn to the at-large system, and that could be a tough discussion of, you know, how does that determine?
And some people might want to run at-large.
Well, right, but then like, yeah, and then like, also, you know, not just for like the current, but like the future elections, like, how do you like, yeah, I, I don't know.
So my question would be, if we did an at-large, two at-large, would those at-large be chair and vice chair? We would change from electing chair and vice chair within the board to four at-large? Then what would be the advantage?
I actually think that's right. I mean, I don't, again, I don't think we have to do it that way, but I think that would make, that would make some sense.
Yeah, I've heard of that assistance.
And if we don't go down that route, what would be the advantage of a five and two?
Well, so the advantage, I'll make the argument, I mean, the advantage is that, from a five-two is that, again, if you've got some controversial changes, right, that are going to benefit some schools in the district, but not all schools, you would have theoretically, politically, the members who represent those zones, and then if it's the best for the district, the at-large members would also see that. And so you could have like a, you know, you'd have a four, potentially four-three votes, you know? And again, we're, we're applying politics with stuff we don't know, but it's not hard for me to, to see an issue that, well, I mean, even, I'm trying to think of some hypotheticals, right? So imagine the last bond, where originally there was a plan to go out and do, um, you know, uh, Cleveland and, what was the last bond, Cleveland-Wilson and-
Jefferson.
And Jefferson, right? And then, all of a sudden, the high schools were off, and then all of a sudden Jefferson was on. If you're not elected at-large and just represented in a zone, you know, would, and, cause I gotta tell you, my, my, my zone was pretty frustrating. They felt like, we've supported all these other high schools, and now you're telling us we gotta wait till 2024. Does that, is that a harder vote to take, if those are your voters? Versus, hey, I get it, I represent the zone, but I'm also elected at-large, and I'm doing something that's right for the whole district.
My concern with that is, if we look at how much would it cost to run at-large? And then you could say, you know, two at-large voters, and then there are two, you know, there are a few districts that are wealthier in Portland, you would kind of create, uh, my, my concern would be you'd create a situation or scenario where you would have four votes that would be from wealthier communities and wealthier environments.
And, and I think your point is a great one. I, we can drop political scenarios that come out almost anyway. So it sort of almost then comes back to what's best practice, what makes the most sense? Which is kind of a good question that Julia asked, of like, does council of great cities schools have any sort of national data information, or frankly, not just have any, any, any?
I mean, city councils do this as well, so, I mean, I mean, you could look at it like local jurisdictions and-
Right, I'd be curious though, how do other like larger or medium cities elect their school boards? Cause I would, I would speak-
Mostly by zone.
Most, right, cause I'm saying, like, I think there's a, there's a world, like Portland, we are the largest, like, area that elected school board in the entire state, and almost along, like, the entire, you know, like, Pacific Northwest, I just be curious to see, like, how do other larger, medium cities navigate their own? Cause you know, like, you talked about Salem earlier ago, Salem, they have a population, I think, about a fifth of ours, maybe a fourth, so it's like, it's kind of, you know, I think that our population matters a lot in this discussion, you know?
I can come back with some, I can, and a lot of them don't elect at all, they're pointed. And I, I have one more point that is a small one, but it is something to consider, is it does cost the district money to have elections. And, and I checked in with the, um, elections office just to get a sense for the difference, if we stay to how we are or switch to zones elections. And it would be slightly, I don't have numbers, but slightly less expensive to have to do it by zone. Um, but probably not monotonally different, but I just wanna make, raise that point, cause it's just less, you know, more than I know.
Um, Gary and Julia, on that sort of, uh, like, like going to seven zones versus a, a more hybrid model in the initial evaluation?
That's the mean.
Having operated in both models, um, I, I think there are some benefits of a hybrid. I mean, you get the benefits of both systems, um, I'm okay with just zones as well, um, but I don't, I don't like this part system. It's, to explain to people how it works is confusing, cause they're like, you're my representative. It's like, oh no, like, actually, listen to me. And then they're like-
You know everyone, not just me.
Yeah, alright.
And I'm like, what block do you live on, cause I'm not sure I'm your representative anyway.
Okay, alright, so let's wrap up, cause I know we gotta have a meeting in fifteen minutes. Um, I think we've got enough guidance, we're coming back on the 22nd, that conversation with the board, how it, sort of a little bit more detailed timeline of these bigger changes and what that might look like to get it done sometime. And then that'll give us some more information for our future task force.
And what future would, my meeting would be on the-
I think right now we've got a twenty, hopefully 28th, by the five.
Twenty, okay, lovely.
Thank you, I appreciate everybody's, yeah, input and contribution. It is exciting.